Hello and welcome back to my ongoing coverage of the Ocean Gate Titan Submersible tragedy. This video begins the testimony of Tim Catterson, former Ocean Gate contractor. Unfortunately, another testimony was given before this one at the public hearing, though it was done via video link and, to be truthful, was a complete mess. Either connection issues or lag or something of that nature rendered the whole thing pretty much unwatchable with large portions of which I had no idea of what was being said. It was clear that the board themselves were struggling with this and I think personally it should have been delayed or rescheduled until it could have been corrected, given that it was a public hearing after all. So I had to skip that one unfortunately and head straight to Mr. Tim Catterson. Mr. Catterson was present on multiple Ocean Gate dives and was working with them on the day that Titan imploded. He is one of the last people to see Titan's crew alive. And so rather than like the previous testimony with Ocean Gate's former Director of Engineering, which spoke in length about a multitude of technical things, this one feels a lot more on the ground, given by someone who was actively involved in the dive operation and has a first person account of how things were handled, problems that occurred and what those Ocean Gate dives were really like. I just wanted to say a huge thank you for the recent influx of subscribers and support for my videos. It really does mean a lot to me. I also wanted to mention quickly that the channel itself is in fact a variety channel, though the wait has been so long for these Ocean Gate updates and we have suddenly received so much in such a short period of time that it requires a lot of my attention. So if you watch my channel for more of a variety, please know that I will also be uploading videos that aren't Ocean Gate related. And for those people who are following for the Ocean Gate update specifically, there is much to come and much to cover and I promise to give you the most complete coverage of the event that I can. And so please bear with me for example, if a new video is not about Ocean Gate because no doubt one will not be far away. Anyway, let's begin Mr. Catterson's testimony and I'll be back again at the end of the video.
We will now hear testimony from Mr. Tim Catterson, a former Ocean Gate contractor.
Good afternoon, Mr. Catterson. All of my questions are going to be related to your background and then to your contractor experience with Ocean Gate. I'd first like to start off with, if you can at least tell me about, a little bit of more about your background with regards to submersible operations, education, history, work history.
Okay. I'm a machinist by trade. I've been working with the manned submersible ROVs, marine sciences and underwater work since about 1987. So it's kind of been a long, long road with marine research and marine science and integration, things like that. My machining background basically helps me to build devices, toys, samplers, things like that. It's like Toys R Us for the underwater world. I've also, my background doesn't, I don't have a paper trail by way of being an engineer, but I've, I've had to do enough problems and sort out enough things that I do understand engineering, so I, but it's just I don't have a trail paper that says I do. Currently I have my own business, which I supply gear, sampling equipment, things like that to various different companies. I also go out and do operations on ROVs, so I, I'm a technician for working on ROVs for the propulsion, some electronic. And then I also do manned submersibles. I've been, I've been working with manned submersibles since the eighties, so it's just kind of stayed with me. I've worked for companies like Triton, Ocean Gate, the Hawaii Undersea Research Lab. I've worked in New Zealand with a submersible that I actually had pretty much built and that went there. That particular sub is the one that came back and was then owned by Ocean Gate, which is how I actually was introduced to Ocean Gate. It's because they were seeking information on the operation and how to use the sub. So and up till now, that's now I have a company that's that I work out of, out of Tucson.
And when did you begin working with Ocean Gate?
I don't know the exact date, but I'm, I would say somewhere around 2003 or 2004, around then, I think.
And what was your role in 2003, 2004 with Ocean Gate?
Well, the first time I was called, I was called by both Stockton and Guillermo. They had just purchased a sub. It's called the Antipodes. It's a, it's an old Perry boat, PC 1503. It is a, it's been modified significantly, carries five passengers, a pilot and four, four passengers. And they had acquired it. This is the sub that I worked on. It was built specifically to operate in New Zealand, in the Milford Sound area. And well, it didn't work out, so I ended up being made redundant, came back home, went to work. And the sub basically disappeared for several years until it finally showed up again at Ocean Gate. And they've backtracked and found out that I was the one that did the build on it and operated. And so they asked me to come up and kind of explain the sub to them because they were very new at the, at this, at the submersible program that they were doing, you know, this was their, their first big sub. So I went up and was planning to do like, like, like a training sequence with them, but they weren't quite interested in the full training sequence. He just wanted to see how it operates. So we did a rather short dive and I wasn't able to show them quite as much as I, you know, thought would have been correct, but I did show them how to ride the bubble anyway.
Have you ever piloted any of the other submersibles that Ocean Gate owned?
I piloted the, well, I've done the Antipodes, I piloted that one a lot. I also piloted the Cyclops, the one that was the modified submersible that came from the Azores. That's it. I've-
Did you ever pilot the Titan?
No.
So you're familiar with the classification societies and their roles in certifying vessels?
Yes.
Can you please describe to me the classification procedure for a submersible? Have you ever gone through a classification procedure for a submersible?
Yes, I have.
Can you please talk me through that?
So with ABS, I'm not, I have not done with anything with the Lloyds or anything like that, but with ABS, the process generally is you first make them aware that depending on what this is, is it a built, a new build, or is it a rebuild, or is it a, just a reclassing? So ABS is informed. They then have a surveyor that will come out basically, see what the, what this process is or the program is. In the case of the subs that I've done, they've been always, there's a sub that's in place and they will come out and they'll do an inspection on it. After that, the sub is taken down to its individual parts, all gauges, all tanks, anything that needs to be classified, calibrated, everything has to get their certifications for like gauges, all gauges, depth gauges, pressure gauges, hydraulic systems, any pressure vessels have all got to go through a test and they get certified. At which point then all this data is then submitted back to ABS. Then the submersible, when it's reassembled, they will come out, usually, so it takes three trips for them, they'll come out a third time. And this then is to make sure that, you know, everything is correctly assembled, you'll do checks for piping leaks, electronic, you know, electronic checks and proofs for like ground fault testing and whatnot. And then finally, when everything all is done, testing, you know, like we have to do like a drop weight tests and various stability checks and all that. Once that's done, a working depth dive is done. Now, my past here experiences that the surveyors always went on the dive, but lately I noticed that they, some of them don't wish to, and so we have to do it other ways, like, you know, take pictures, proof of, proof of depth, proof of functionality and all this. So it's, the whole process takes months, several months, probably about four months, depending on how fast you can get things organized.
Are the majority of submersibles that you operated, have they been classed?
Yes, yes.
Have any other than the Cyclops one not been classed?
None. They've all been, every, I mean, that would have been the first one that it was not classed.
Were you aware that the Titan was not classed?
The Titan?
Titan.
Yes.
Have you ever had a conversation with Mr. Rush regarding the classification procedure and/or requirements for the Titan?
Yes.
Can you please tell me about that conversation?
They're usually rather short. They basically amounted to that the reason for the classification is basically that it's proof of due diligence. It's also primarily one of the ways that you can get insurance for the submersibles. That's, that's one of the very big things actually. I had explained this to him and he, well, I guess that wasn't as big of a worry for him as it would be for most people. I don't know. I, I said my piece and there it went. I mean, that's, that's as far as it went.
So in your professional opinion, as a submersible pilot, would you recommend a submersible becoming classed?
Yes, certainly. It's, it's a third party opinion. It's like getting a second opinion from your doctor or something. It's, ABS is not supremely versed with manned submersibles, but that's not the point. What they do is have all these criteria and standardized checks and, checks and balances that you need to maintain. So they may not know how the sub works specifically, but they know that if your, your breaker panel, you have to have X amount of protections for either, you know, fusing or power overloads or the hydraulic system, you need to prove that in fact that you can deliver the system pressure or the volumes that you need. Or in your pneumatic systems, you need to prove that you have life support to the, to the degree that they have, well, ABS has not come up with these standards. PVHO does this. PVHO is the pressure vessel for human occupancy. They've set standards for standard man, the requirements for life support that's needed. And pretty much verbatim, every testing or classing organization out there follows that literally to the word. So it's well known what, what you need to have. And so ABS is basically that third party that, that proves because they check, they say, yes, this is what we have, this is what you need to do. And so it goes to the very end. So it's, your due diligence is checked all along the way by a third party.
Do you know how many times you worked as a contractor for Ocean Gate?
How many times?
Roughly?
In the very beginning, I was called up several times a year. I would go up for maybe two weeks. And then as they got more acquainted with the Antipodes, not as much. There was, I was usually called in when there was kind of something maybe larger going on, a dive that required more than just going down and looking, I suppose you could say, you know, if we were going to go to, to do some, a survey or to do just, it was anything that was a little bit more than their usual thing diving and outside of Everett.
And in your time as a contractor with Ocean Gate, how would you, how would you describe their workplace environment that you observed?
The workplace environment was actually quite good. They made, they always made sure that, you know, there was, there was a space, that the places were cleaned up. I mean, you know, like operation for a warehouse or things like that, because that's usually how you, where you work on the subs. In the warehouse and it, and in places like that, they would make sure that if you were doing lifting procedures, you know, you would get help. And then as it moved out to other projects, they often had toolbox talks, you know, about safety and wearing your, you know, protective, you know, devices and things like that, helmets, steel-toed shoes. So they were quite aware about, you know, maintaining a safe working environment for the people there. Oftentimes, well, I mean, when I was in the warehouse, sometimes I probably wasn't wearing my steel-toed shoes, but it was, they, they did have a, a protocol, you know, albeit sometimes it's loose, but they did have a, a process of trying to keep people from getting hurt. It's, that's quite true, they did.
While at Ocean Gate, did you ever work with Mr. David Lockridge?
To, oh, yes, David, yes.
How many, how long have you known Mr. Lockridge?
I, I met him actually when he came over in the very beginning to try out as a kind of a test for Ocean Gate to see, you know, if there was a job there. I mean, at the time he was living in, over in Scotland. So he had come over to, was interviewed and was basically just wanting to see if it was a fit for him. So I've, I've known him since he started. I was there before and I knew him when he was working there and-
Were you aware of and did you have any part in the inspection record that he produced to Mr. Rush in the early 2018?
No, I, I've never seen it nor have I gotten to read it, but there were some, you know, things that of course we, we talked about, you know, he, he had issues and I had issues and we all, we did discuss things and so, so I'm assuming some of those discussions were probably in his, in his paper, but I don't know.
What were some of the issues that you had that you discussed with Mr. Lockridge?
Well, I, I think it's, I couldn't tell when Bonnie was talking, but she was saying something about the O-ring, the O-ring groove. And on the, on that face, so the O-ring groove was a dovetail groove. I cut them. I know what they are. I, I machine them and I make them. And they're, they are built as a specifically to maintain an O-ring from getting out, getting loose once they're been put in place. That's all fine and good, but the process that they did to cut the O-ring groove, it means that you have to bring a dovetail cutter, which is wider at the bottom than it is at the top, down into the groove to cut this. And on this particular one, usually what you would do is you would get a cutter that the, the bottom of the head is a smaller diameter than the overall width of the, the top of the groove. So you could fit it down in, cut the dovetail, which means you'd have to do several passes and then you would come out and what they would leave is a groove on the top, which is unblemished and the dovetail down beneath. But this one was done apparently with a much larger cutter. It was titanium, so maybe there was just issues about that. I don't know. But when they did it, they did a plunge cut, they cut the groove first and then did a plunge cut with the dovetail down to the bottom, which you could then go around the entire O-ring's face and then at one point there would be a, so a hole that breached the edges of the O-ring groove. That's where the, the cutter was put down in and then the grooves were cut and then it was removed back out that hole. So that means on that face of the O-ring groove on the inside, there were divots. I don't know if that makes sense, but I can draw it up for you if you like, but-
Yeah, makes, makes perfect sense. Now, that was the original Titan Hall back in 2017. And since you have worked and contracted by Ocean Gate with the new or final Titan Hall, so that was the same in 2018 as it was in 23?
Yes, they were exactly the same halls. They, yes, they were the same.
So now I'd like to move on to the Titanic expeditions and your role as a contractor in the Titanic expeditions and start with 2021. Were you onboard expedition 2021 at any time?
I, I went out on all three years of expeditions. I didn't go out on every trip out per expedition, so they had like, usually like five weeks, they would go out and do five different sections. I was usually there for two or three. Just, you know, to trade out. So my first, the first two years I was there as a safety diver. Basically, if there's some issues with the, getting the sub on the LRT, which was generally the case. So the LRT, to make it work, to be functionally well working, the LRT should be low enough in the water so that the water's not moving the sub around when they come in for a landing. There were times when they had the, the cabling that was supporting the platform onto the surface, coupling it to the surface were too short. And so sometimes it was, the sub was, you know, a little squarely trying to get it into position and place. So I, and more often than not, that was the times when I was going into the water to help them, to help guide the sub in, to get it, to make sure that they could latch in and then recover. There was perhaps two times when they dropped weights and the mechanism didn't function, you know, quite well. I mean, so they released the weights, but the weight didn't go away.
I'll get to those in just a few seconds.
And, yeah.
Sorry, go ahead, sir.
Okay, sorry. And so I, there was, there was, you know, some cases like that where I'd go in and cut them loose and so they can square up and land.
So you, you used the acronym LRT. Can you tell me what LRT means?
The LRT, that's actually my term for it because when I worked for the university, they, we called it the LRT, but it's a Lars, it's a launch and recovery platform or launch, recovery and transport.
So we know in 2023 that one of your positions was as the platform operator, so you're very familiar with the launch and recovery system. Can you please tell me and tell us about how it worked and its dimensions and the purpose of it?
Okay, so they had it, the, the Lars for Ocean Gate was pneumatically controlled. The idea, it's a, it's a good idea if it could have been implemented well, but the idea is to try to make this so that it's a diverless recovery and, and launch. That was the, the ultimate goal was to work in that direction. So this, the platform was controlled pneumatically from the surface. We had, there was an umbilical that went down to the platform controlling both the, the vent valves and the flood valves. Right? So a person could virtually on the surface drive the platform up or down. It sounds like a great plan. But almost inevitably, there was, it's, it's, it's hard to replace a person that is down there that actually can see what's going on exactly compared to being on the surface and doing certain steps and for the most part, I think, hoping that every time that it comes up exactly as it's supposed to. That's the, that's the hard part is that when I worked in Hawaii, they had a, an LRT also. It carried three support divers. There was a pilot on the LRT, literally you could watch and see everything. This, this particular one was doing the same thing, but you're on the surface and you cannot actually tell exactly what's going on down there. So it's, like I said, it was, the idea was a nice idea and I suspect that if more work and development went into it, it would probably be a great idea, but at the time, you're still trying to look through water and to see what's going on, you don't actually know.
Do you remember what missions you were on for the Titanic expedition in 2021?
Well, so the first year I was on the last two. The second one, I think I was, that was on the, I was on the last two as well. I was usually there on, at the end. And then on the third and final one, I think I did three.
You had mentioned some drop weight issues and while you were the diver. Can you talk to me a little bit more about those drop weight issues that you were there that you witnessed?
Well-
And do you remember the dive number offhand?
It was, it would have been on the 2021, 2022, 2022, on one of the dives, you know, during the two weeks, during the two trips that I was out, they were making an ascent and it was just coming up quite slow. So there's a point where the first 2,000 meters basically in seawater, the, due to the, the temperature change, the buoyancy from surface to about 2,000 meters down, the, the density of the water changes the most. Once you get past 2,000 meters, it pretty much flatlines almost all the way down to the bottom, but the first 2,000 meters changes density, meaning you have to, you have to calculate your drop weight, your drop weights and ballast to accommodate that 2,000 meters. Basically the water is getting thicker and heavier the deeper you go. So you need to, as you're dropping through the water column, you need to have enough weight to make sure that you can, you would, they will, you'll still maintain a negative ballast if you're going to go deeper to get past that 2,000 meters. As an example, a 10, a 10 ton sub- As an example, a 10, a 10-ton sub or a 15-ton sub, that's all displacement. That's how you know the weight of the sub. It's what it will displace. And for around 10 to 15 tons, you basically need, if it's neutral at the surface, by the time you get down to 2,000 meters, you need to have about 200 pounds more weight. It's changed that much over that volume. They didn't have quite as much, they didn't have enough weight as they were coming up with the ballast. And so it came up to a point where the sub became neutral. So you have to dump some more weight. And they did. They dropped some more weight, and then it started coming up more and more. But then they got to, again, they only were able to drop 70 pounds or something like that. That's what I believe it was, once they got up. That's not enough to do what they needed to have happen. So the sub was coming up and getting, literally, it was going to be stuck at somewhere around, I think they were between 1,500 and 1,700 meters. The belly of the sub has these weights that you can, you can jettison the whole thing. This is, nobody wants to do it because that literally will end your dive trip because this is part of, part of the assembly. It's an emergency drop weight. They needed to go and do the emergency drop weight. One side of it let loose and it swung down, and they dropped their weights and, and up they came. Half of it was still connected. It swung down, which, okay, yay. They didn't have to replace this. It came up, but now it's, this, it was hanging below the sub. And so I had to go into the water and re-pull it back up into place and, and secure it. So otherwise, they couldn't land on the LRT. So, yeah, there was, there was, there was a buoyancy issue. And it was enough that they, you know, went through their other procedures and, you know, he was prepared to drop it. And they did, but it didn't completely release.
Do you know who, who was the pilot on that dive?
It was either Stockton or Scott. I'm not sure.
I'd like to talk about Expedition 2023. When did you come onboard Expedition 2023?
I, I came in on like the last three trips out. So the first two, Ryan was running the LRT. And then I, he basically had to go home. So I came out and finished up the rest of that. So that would have been the last three trips out.
In 2021 and 2022, there were significantly more Ocean Gate employees aboard the expedition, especially then we're on for Mission Five. Do you know why this was the case? Or were you aware of why there was less employees than previous years?
I don't really, I, my connection with Ocean Gate was a couple of, you know, a couple of times, a couple of weeks each year. So I didn't really.
Were you paid for your services in 2021 and 2022 on the expeditions?
Was I paid?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Were you paid on Expedition 2023? Did you feel in Expedition 2023 that Ocean Gate's staffing was sufficient to ensure safety?
I think, I think training and operations at, at sea could have been better. They, I mean, look, most of the time, they do their operations, they're operating out of Everett. They're doing training and, and seamanship and how to do all of this. But Everett is like a bathtub compared to going out into the North Atlantic. And it is different. It's more demanding. It's harder. We had fog. We had all sorts of things, which hardly any of them actually got to practice with when they're at Everett. Yes, they're going out on the ocean, great. They, yes, they are seeing chop in some seas. But it's not like going out and basically getting hammered sometimes out in the North Atlantic. So I would say that the training was up to par for where they were working with. But once you stepped out into the, you know, you just stepped into the barrel of a gun. It's, it's, it's just bigger out there. And so I think the training probably didn't reflect as good of a, of a base of knowledge for out there. That's just an opinion.
So regarding the support vessel, so in 2021 and 2022, the support vessel was the Horizon Arctic?
Yes.
In 2023, the support vessel was the Polar Prince?
The Polar Prince, yes.
Can you talk to me about the, the different modes and methods at which the Titan was, was operated off of those vessels?
You mean, what's my, what are my thoughts on the shipboard stuff?
On the storage and logistics of one from having the Titan and the LARS on the aft end of the ship to towing it from, to and from the Titanic?
Ah, again, just my opinion. But on the Arctic, they had a ramp off the stern that they, and with tuggers. They would literally pull the LRT up this ramp and bring it up onto the back deck of the ship. Frankly, I think it probably took a bigger beating coming up that ramp, getting it positioned, getting it on the ramp and pulling it up and sitting it up on the back deck than what it saw riding around, splashing around on the LRT, truthfully. When you're on the LRT out in the water, you're doing this, but it's not this. It's, you're just, you're just getting tossed all around. But when we were pulling it up that ramp, there were definitely some hits. It's, you know, steel against steel. And when it would, was brought up, you know, it's, it's now bum, 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 bum. I think it probably took more hits on, on the Arctic than the Polar Prince, to be honest with you. Obviously, it's a longer tow, and so you're getting a cyclic fatigue. You know, I don't know. It's, it's the order of magnitude, whether you have a lot of small hits or a couple of big hits. Not quite sure how they balance out. But again, just my opinion, it's.
While you were onboard Expedition 2023, how would you describe the weather conditions?
Well, none of them were good. None of the days were good, for the most part. Well, as you all know, that, that last dive was the only dive that they actually made, you know, of any consequence to any dive. All the rest of them, they were weathered out. It was, it was pretty much wow, pretty much all the way through, waiting on weather. There were fogs. I mean, it's, it's, it's an accepted rule that you don't launch or recover, whether it's ROVs or HOVs. You don't do operations if, if you, if you don't have at least a kilometer of visibility, at least that. And there were, there were times when the fog was, visibility was maybe, you know, 100 foot at best. So those days were weathered out. They just simply couldn't dive. That final day, on the 18th, that was the first day that we had where I saw the sun. The, I mean, the fog was gone, the ocean was calm. It's like, I don't know, somebody just blessed it that day or whatever because it was, it was like, it looked like a perfect diving day. It was, water was flat, everything was good. So we went ahead.
With regards to that day, can you start from the pre-dive, the pre-dive brief and tell me about the period leading up to the commencement of the dive?
Ocean Gate had a very long, extensive pre-dive. From, from any of my experience, I mean, when I'm doing subs, there is a pre-dive check that you do and you go through and you understand what's needed. But this was, seemed to be, because there were so many things in motion, it was, it was a rather large and complicated procedure. We started at four in the morning that day. And we'd launched at eight o'clock. So there was essentially like almost four hours' worth of pre-diving and prepping and getting things up and going. I'm not used to that sort of procedure. It's, it's, it's like there were so many, so many things that had to be looked at and checked and over. It's, it's not there, subs do not have that many things to check over and over and over. But there were. We did. And that also includes the LRT, the platform. There's a whole checklist for it as well. So all this thing is going in tandem. And by the time we got it all done, everybody was loaded, the, the hatch was secured, and it was eight o'clock. And it was, this was like one of the first times I've ever seen where we actually managed to launch at exactly the time we had scheduled for. Normally, we'd be running late just because there's so many things to check and then recheck. So the process went, the LRT was set up to ready to go. The sub then was finally set up and ready to go. And then we did the launch at, what, 8:05 or something? I think that's what the log says.
And what was your responsibility on that day?
I was running the platform again. So I was going, basically, I did all the, the dive checks for the platform, which I had done, you know, took what, 15, 20 minutes? It's not that hard. At which point, then, I also did work with helping them, you know, get the sub ready or, you know, if somebody needed a pair of hands to shift like possibly, to shift the ballast around on the LRT to make it sit square or deploying the buoys and stuff like that. Deploying the buoys generally needed somebody a bit stronger. So, you know, I was setting off the, the, the buoys were, they have a, you know, a buoy, and then there's a, an anchor and a lock at the bottom. So the LRT drops down and, and sits on, on a four-point subsurface. So those, those anchors are kind of, they were basically big chain links, and they're kind of hard to wrestle with. So I, you know, I was doing that as well. I just had the horsepower.
So enduring dive 88, was there any issues or problems with any of the materials or the sub or the Launch and Recovery System?
No, no. Actually, it was, it was an amazing day. Everything was just boom. You know, it just took a long time. But every, there was, there were no red flags. It's like, like I said, you know, the sun came out. Everybody just got blessed or whatever. So it was a good day. It looked, we were on time. We did the launch. And, and then he took off.
And did you have any communications with any of the crew members of the Titan submersible?
Did I?
Yes.
They were, they were coming in on a different boat. I was basically at the end of the LRT with several other people. They're going to come up, throw it, you know, a bowline to me and pull them in and secure it and so then people can start crawling out of the boat. That's pretty much some total of that communication.
And then what was the next step? So after the passengers get into the submersible, then, then what happens?
The dome is secured, which, you know, is a process. But they, it was, it's secured and then it's bolted closed. And then we did a test. Yes, we did that even for the dive two. So we did a test where we pulled vacuum to make sure that the O-ring seals. And then, in fact, we did do the, pulled the vacuum on the hull a little bit just so they could test to make sure that the O-ring is seating. So we pulled the vacuum on that. And then I, I disconnected it, locked everything up, and then that was put back in the boat. And they would look at the barometer on the inside to see if there was any changing in air pressure. And there was no leaks. So they were all good with that.
And if there were to be an issue or, or a problem, would they have radioed that to you?
Yes, you know, they would have, the dive would have been aborted until it was fixed. I mean, that had, that was part of their process, their system of checks that, you know, the vacuum had to hold. It had to be in place.
So what was your next step? So the passengers have been loaded, everybody's been bolted. And what was the next step for you as the platform operator?
After that, everybody that came in, there, so there would have been two boats out there now. The boat that I was in and working with and the boat that brought the passengers. So then everybody would leave the platform. And it is, for all practical purposes, it's ready to dive at this point. Well, there was, there were the, there were some stop chocks that you need to pull out so that the sub can get out of the saddle. And that, of course, was done early on. So we all left. And at that point, it's, I wait until I get the, the command two, they're ready to launch. So that means the pilot is going through system, checks in the subs now. Now that everything's closed up, he's getting everything up and running. Sonar, communications, thrusters. Everything is coming live on the sub. And I'm basically waiting until they are ready to dive.
And at the point at which they did, on this day, they did dive, can you tell me, is there a, is there a signal that is a normal signal that the dive is commencing from the submersible? Or do you just hear over the radio?
You mean for me to, to, to submerge the platform?
Yes.
I get that from the ops director on the ship.
So you got that from the ops director, and then what happened?
I was told to, they're ready to dive. So at that point, then, I make sure everybody's clear. And then I start venting the tanks. And the LRT basically sinks below the waves and along with it, the sub goes down to the bottom, at which point now no longer, my radio does not work to anybody on the sub. So I, soon as they're down there, I lose communications. So the ship and the sub will establish communications by their acoustic link. So once that's established, I, I have no control over anything at that point. Now it's all between the ship and the sub. They're in communications. And at which point, the pilot says that all systems are go, we are ready to dive. And they're given permission by the ship to do so, which they will then come out of the saddle, drive out, and commence their dive. So we basically stay there and wait until they reach 1,000 meters, which we did. And after that, they told us that they've passed 1,000 meters. It's time to, you can come in now. So that's, basically, at that point, I secure the LRT and we head back in and I have breakfast. Also, at which time, I'm off duty. So I just basically went and got something to eat. I'd spent out there on the water since four that day. So everything, I was cold and ready to get warmed up and have some breakfast. So that's what I did. I went and had a breakfast and ate and then went up.
At that point, did anybody make any notification to you that there was any emergency aboard the Titan?
No, I'm not sure they even knew exactly where I was, to be honest with you, but no. Like I said, I went and had breakfast, I took a shower, got warmed up, and then I went up to the bridge. I was in no big hurry, but I just wanted to go up and, well, they made it to the Titanic. Let's, let's see pictures, let's hear what's going on. At which point, when I came up, that's when I discovered that in fact, there were no communications.
And then from that point on, what, what was your role? What, what did you begin to do at that point?
I, well, I had no role then. I, I mean, I was, I was off duty. I had no role, although I have experience with subs. So I basically voiced my opinions of, we can do this, we can do this, are you doing this? Type of thing, but yeah, in truth, I was the stand, you know, a bystander.
And did you assist in the search and rescue or any type of the actions that took place? Yes. Can you please explain what you did?
In the search and rescue, there was, there was Scott Griffiths, myself, Kyle Bingham. You know, we were all basically tied in with this. I was tied into it just basically because of my back history. It's, I, I haven't gone through an emergency like this before, but I've certainly gone through the whole process before. So at which point, we did everything that we could to try to ascertain whether it was just a, a communications issue or, or, or something else. It was at that time when it's basically, I started asking questions about when did the, when did the, when did it happen? Or what's the interrogation rate of the tracker or things like that? Can you track it? And that's when I learned that both the tracking and the communications stopped. They both stopped because Ocean Gate was using the acoustic modem that is built on to the transducer to use that as also a communications link. It works fine. But I don't think that was ever the intent of the company that makes those beacons to be used like that. Its primary function was to improve your tracking ability because, so there's an acoustic modem built on there, which is tied in with a depth sensor. So when the beacon is at a particular depth, the depth sensor on the tracking beacon will also send this data up to the, the, the short baseline that's on the ship. This allows the computer, the computation stuff to be much simpler because you only have to do, it only has to really figure out a range and bearing rather than extrapolate the depth from the angles. So you get range and bearing from the, the head and then the added data coming up from that transponder is giving you the depth. So that's what it was made for, to improve the tracking in the 3D picture. They can also be used to send AUVs command signals like do a certain search pattern, grid pattern or whatever. I mean, it's very useful. It's just that it also worked as to be able to type up messages and sending them up through the acoustic modem as well. Normally, there would have been two devices there, you know, your, your communications, which is completely separate from your tracking. Under, this is the first case I've ever, ever seen where it was all done on the same thing, which basically means that when one failed, so did the other. So both tracking and communications were down. At which point then, we tried to find out, well, what was their last known depth? What was their position? You know, all of these things to, at least we needed to get like a, a last known fix. And it, since both things went out at the same time, we assumed that it was, something had failed on the, the transponder itself. That's the first conclusion one comes to. It's like, it's, it's not working or.
So did you remain on the Polar Prince?
I stayed on, yes. I was on the Polar Prince for the, the, the process of, you know, of the looking for it, all that. I was there, you know, I, I tried to utilize some of the points and positions and to try to figure out how the Canadian Coast Guard was able to triangulate. They, because they, they were giving us fixes. They said that they heard this knocking. And unless all of their sonobuys were picking this up, you wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to triangulate. And you know what I mean? I mean, if they had one buoy out, two buoys out, two buoys, maybe you might get something, but three or four would be much better that you would, and they would all have to hear it. And they would also have to have a timestamp on when the signal came in for each one of these things, at which point then, yes, they, and they were giving triangulated positions for where they think this is coming from now, this noise is coming from. And so we were assuming, I mean, noise from the ocean is not, it's chaotic. It's, you just, you don't, unless you're listening to a dolphin click or something like that, for the most part, nothing is, is clear and, and even and equal. But the claims, I never heard the sounds, but the, what, what the, the Canadian group said was, is that it was a, it was a clear knocking sound, knocking or clicking or banging, you know, it's whatever word they chose to use. And they said that it happened over several different times. This, you know, it's obviously, it's, it's, if it happens more than once and if it happens consistently, it's something that humans are doing. It's not arbitrarily happening. So with that in mind, we're now assuming that, oh crap, they're drifting. Because the first triangulation they gave us was basically about a hundred meters, it was about a hundred meters to the south, southeast of their last known fix. So we went to this position and we were, and they, they focused on putting more buoys out there. But it was very sporadic with this knocking. And then, of course, they end, they finish at the end of the day and then they go home because they're running out of fuel, they gotta get more buoys and, you know, all these things. So logistically, they, they weren't sending these stone, sonobuys out 24/7, they were through the daylight hours. So the next morning, they would be back and more sonobuys would go out. And another time, there would be another triangulation spot, that it's in a different place, farther. What I did notice is that it was always farther to the south, southeast. It never went north of that, of the fix. It never went, you know, full east or west. It was always on this swath, kind of heading down to the south, southeast. So we assumed that it was drifting, possibly mid-water. Maybe they're dragging over the bottom. Don't know, have no idea. This was all theories that were just flying around between people who are totally without sleep and very anxious and, you know, just, it's the worst thing that could be happening.
That concludes the first part of Mr. Catterson's testimony. I think it was a nice contrast to the previous testimony and showed a whole different angle to the Ocean Gate operation. A big difference I noticed was how relaxed Mr. Catterson seemed to be in comparison to Mr. Nissen. He also appeared unbiased in his answers, stating both the good and the bad in various places. He seemed very open and had no problems going into specific detail when asked about any of his involvements or responsibilities. It was interesting to hear of his interactions with David Lockridge and that they shared some concerns at a time before Lockridge would go on to submit his now famous safety report. As stated in a previous video, I'm looking forward to Mr. Lockridge's testimony as I think it will hold the answers to a lot of key subjects. Conversations with Stockton Rush were also mentioned by Mr. Catterson, being described as often short. Mr. Catterson spoke of problems with dropping weights on a previous dive and the measures he had to take to enable Titan to land back on its platform. He describes the company with praise in terms of their safety and working conditions, though cites that the training given was only suitable for the small area that they were working in and that the Atlantic Ocean is a lot less forgiving and poses different, larger problems. When speaking of Titan, he confirms that all of the subs that he worked on in the past before joining Ocean Gate had been certified. He also speaks about the bumps and knocks that the submersible would endure when being pulled up the ramp of its initial support ship, describing it as steel on steel and much more likely to cause damage over time than eventually being towed by its replacement ship, the Polar Prince. These are the types of things that can play a part in the integrity of the hull and so I'm grateful that we're getting a chance to hear from all departments of Ocean Gate and gaining a clearer understanding. It was also interesting to hear about the timeline of his shift on the day of that catastrophic implosion. From a 4:00 AM start and then, along with others, spending four hours on pre-dive checks and preparations, something he described as odd and not something he had experienced before, stating that a submersible really doesn't have that much to check. Once his shift was completed and Titan had begun its dive, it's good to hear from someone who was actually aboard the Polar Prince when loss of communication and tracking occurred. The infamous knocking sounds that provided some initial hope during those rescue efforts in 2023 are spoken about. And from the locations of the sub provided by the Canadian Coast Guard, it appears that the initial thought was that Titan was drifting. This loss of both communication and tracking due to them being operated from the same piece of equipment and furthermore, that the equipment mentioned was not actually intended as a messaging device. Had these comms and tracking been separate, one may have still worked without the other. This comes back once again to Titan's design and I look forward to learning even more new information about it in the near future. I will be back very soon with the next video in this coverage of the Titan tragedy, which will be the continuation of this testimony. So until then, thank you very much for watching and if you haven't already, please subscribe for future uploads. Bye for now.